This is a regular session. Could we please start with a roll call?
Yes, Mayor Coombs.
Here.
Council members Bagley.
I am here.
Christensen.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Peck.
Here.
And Santos.
Here.
Mayor Coombs, we have a quorum.
Okay, let's stand for a Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right.
Anyone wishing to speak at first call, public invited to be heard, will need to add his or her name to the list outside the council chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at first call, public invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their name on that list will have an opportunity to speak during the public hearing items this evening or at final call, public invited to be heard on any item at the end of the meeting. So now we have the April 12 regular session council meetings to approve. Council member Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move approval of the April 12 minutes.
All right, we've got a motion and it's been second. Let's vote. That passes seven to zero. Valerie, are there any agenda revisions?
Yes, Mayor Coombs, there was a revision to the contract for item 8A. We emailed that to you at the end of last week. The contract itself had a revision that changed from Athalter Park as one of the locations for the summer meal program to Countryside Village Mobile Home. And then this afternoon, it's not a revision to the agenda, but staff emailed you additional information on 8B, which is the sale of 8 Marshall Place. We placed that at your desks in case you didn't have an opportunity to look at that since it went out so late this afternoon.
Okay.
And that's it.
Okay, so we have a special report. Or first off, is there a report from the city manager?
No report, Mayor, council.
All right, so we have Jessica Erickson is here to present. The president of the Longmont Economic Development Partnership is here to present to council.
All right, thank you, Mayor. And good evening, Mayor and council. As the mayor stated, I am here to provide the first quarter economic development update from the Longmont Economic Development Partnership. And I do apologize, I just noticed that our new fonts don't match with whatever version of Office that you have. So we'll change those to standard fonts in the future. I'm not sure where they're off throughout the presentation, but where they are off, that's why. All right, so I'm going to remind you that, starting this year, with the rebranding of the organization and the renaming of the organization, we've started identifying ourselves as focusing our economic development efforts in four core service areas of advanced Longmont, advanced primary industry, advanced local business, and advanced startup community. And so that's how I'm going, that will be the order of the report that I'm going to present to you this evening. And so as an update, providing some first quarter milestone achieved through the advanced Longmont strategy. And so in collaboration with our advanced Longmont partners, we did update all of the implementation tables to reflect work completed in 2015 and new work as part of the plan in 2016. We do have planning underway and are actively participating in the planning for 2016 Longmont Startup Week, which will be the first week in June this year. We did submit a successful application for enterprise zone contribution designation, not just for our organization, but also for the Our Center and the Tinker Mill. We partnered with the mayor and you all and staff on the proclamation to designate the week of February 22 as Entrepreneurship Week in Longmont, including an event that was held at 300 Suns and a recognition of our startup community here at a city council meeting. We hosted our first primary employer executive roundtable that focused on talent development and included Colorado Workforce Development Council, as well as the new chair of the Governor's Business Experiential Learning Commission, to understand how we in Longmont and our businesses here could benefit from those efforts at the state level. We also launched our local business survey pilot project and have now pre-certified 135 companies in the north metro enterprise zone. That does encompass Longmont, Lafayette, and Broomfield, but about 80% of those companies are located, that we've pre-certified, are located here in Longmont. The remainder are in Lafayette and Broomfield. And then, again, we continue to collaborate with all of our advanced Longmont partners in implementing the strategy for economic development in Longmont. I have provided, and is in the quarterly report that you presented, certainly a big part of what we're charged with is marketing the city of Longmont for purposes of economic development. So wanted to provide you with some information on our efforts to that end. So in relation to our various e-marketing campaigns, you can see that effective this year, we've significantly increased the reach of our email marketing campaigns, which vary in purpose. Some of them promoting our events and events within the community, others promoting Longmont for purposes of economic development. You can see a list of some of those communications here. But we went from about a distribution list of about 250 people to a distribution list that's leveled off at just over 1,000 people for those weekly updates that go out. And you'll see that our open rate for those has not decreased, even though we've quadrupled the number of people that we're sending it to, we're still achieving close to a 30% open rate, which industry average is about 23%. So we're pretty pleased with the open rate that we have. We've also significantly increased our social media presence as part of our marketing efforts. So on Facebook, we've gone, we've actually just over doubled the total Facebook likes that we have for our organization. And, and we just started using Twitter this year. And as of the end of the first quarter, had 91 followers. We're actually in excess of 100 followers as of today. And so the next several slides that I'm going to show you are actually not included in the quarterly report that you have. I think you might remember that I've mentioned in the past that we were in the process of acquiring a data source that would allow us to have access to significantly more and better data related to true job and economy information here within the city of Longmont, in the Longmont area. So these numbers represent what we call the Longmont area, or our service territory, which covers the city of Longmont, as well as some portions of Weld County and Boulder County, just outside of the city of Longmont. And so in all sectors within the Longmont area, there exist 53,594 jobs. This was as of the end of 2015. And we had a 3.3% unemployment rate. True net job creation in 2015 was 774 new jobs. And that, again, is in all sectors of the economy, which represents 1.5% job growth, which in comparison, which we compared to both the Colorado and US economies, which had, both had 1.9% job growth in 2015. And Boulder County as a whole had 0.8% job growth in 2015. So we're in line with national and state averages and actually ahead of Boulder County in terms of job creation last year, again, across all sectors of the economy. Our, it also looked at from kind of when we hit bottom during the recession. So bottom of the barrel for us was 2010 in terms of the total number of jobs within the community. And so since 2010, we've seen a 12% job growth within the Longmont area as compared to a 12.8% job growth in Colorado, 8.7% in the United States, and 11.8% in Colorado. So again, ahead of the national average, ahead of the Boulder County average, and certainly below the Colorado average. Colorado has kind of been an anomaly over the last couple of years in terms of, of job creation and economic growth. We also looked at average earnings. Average earnings within the Longmont area are 62,100. And that's average earnings kind of all in. So that's inclusive of wages, benefits, bonuses, any other kind of.
Per job.
Earnings.
Per job.
Per job. So 62,100 average earnings, which is 99% of both the Colorado and national averages, 88% of Boulder County average, Boulder County being one of the wealthiest counties in the country, and certainly in the state of Colorado. Okay, and so then we took that down to what we typically report to you, which is primary industry data. And historically, as an organization, we've gotten to those numbers through direct research, or reaching out to our individual primary industry companies and asking them to self-report job creation or job losses. So, and we've been relatively accurate based on this data. We've been within 1,000 jobs and within just a couple of percent of what we're reporting in terms of primary industry jobs. And so I wanted to, before I talk about 2016, so I make sure that we're comparing apples to apples, kind of taking you back to 2015, and what this data source says job creation was, or jobs looked like within the Longmont area in 2015. And so comparing 2014 to 2015, it's very similar to what we've reported, again, just a different source for the data. 2014 jobs overall, 13,963. 2015 jobs, or I'm sorry, 2014, 13,963. 2015, 13,927. So we know, as we've reported before, we saw a net job loss from 2014 to 2015. Again, a significant portion of that related to the loss of two large corporations within the community. And so now we'll look at what's happened since 2015. So what's happened in the first quarter of 2016. Again, comparing apples to apples now because we're using the same data source. And so far, in first quarter of 2016, you can see that we've experienced job growth in all sectors of our primary industries, for a total gain of 302 jobs just in the first quarter of 2016. So when we ask the question about the strategy that we've undertaken over the last couple of years, and whether or not it's been effective, according to the numbers, I think we can see that it has been, or is starting to be effective as of this year. Okay, so then we want to talk about, so those are overall numbers. So this is the data that we have access to that informs what the, what the economy looks like, like in the Longmont area. So then we want to talk about what are the results of your investment, of the community's investment in economic development in the Longmont Economic Development Partnership? What direct impact are we as an organization, as a partnership, having on these numbers overall? And so that's when we get into our other core service areas, starting with advancing primary industry. And so in the first quarter of 2016, we worked with three companies that created 29 primary industry jobs within the community. We also, or those are three newly locating or expanding into Longmont companies. We also worked with 13 companies already here that have created 41 new jobs within the first quarter of 2016. Or we've had a direct impact on about a quarter of all the new jobs that have been created in Longmont in the first quarter of 2016. And I stress direct impact because there's not really a way to measure indirect impact, or those people who are aware of our efforts, who have been informed by our efforts, but haven't necessarily reached out to us directly for our support or assistance. We're currently working with projects, or I'm sorry, we currently are aware of projects that will announce, hopefully within the next couple of months, an additional 60 new jobs locating here in Longmont, or expanding here in Longmont. And our pipeline of prospects that we're working with has the potential to add an additional 1,200 new jobs to the Longmont economy. The projects that we've worked with this year have absorbed just over 3,000 square feet of space, of the available vacant space within the community. And so a little deeper look into that project pipeline, we're currently working with 30, or as of the end of the first quarter of this year, we were working with 33 projects for either business attraction or expansion. And you can see the breakdown between the two. About two-thirds of those are new business attraction projects, about a third are existing industry projects. And then on the other side, you'll see that a majority of those projects are within those targeted industry clusters that are a part of the advanced Longmont strategy. And then our second, our next area of focus is in advancing our local business environment. So when we talk about there's 53,000 jobs in the Longmont area, 13,000, approximately 13,000 of those are within primary industry. The other 40,000 are representative, represented within our local business sector. So those are all the service providing businesses here locally. Our retailers, our restaurants, our hospitals, our banks, our attorneys, and the like.
What was that last?
Attorneys. Very important to the Longmont economy.
Very important.
Yes, absolutely.
Right, you chief?
Uh huh. And so, understanding that a significant portion of the jobs, more than significant portion of the jobs that exist here within the Longmont area, helps us to understand sectors, the most, I think, effective and efficient way to create new jobs and to bolster the economy within a local community is to focus on supporting the startup community, or creating our own within the local economy. And so here are some examples of some of the things that we're doing, or have been doing so far this year, in order to support the startup community here in Longmont. We continue to support, sponsor, and help plan and execute the new Tech Longmont, which continues to attract around or in excess of 100 attendees on an annual basis. The side benefit to that is, about 2/3 of those attendees, on a monthly basis, tend to come from outside of the community, which helps us to highlight the technology economy here in Longmont externally, to help promote those businesses that exist here, as well as the growth of that industry going forward. We also recently started a scholarship program for the Tech Venture Series, to help support, again, the technology startups within the community. And we've awarded 692 of those scholarships to technology startups here within Longmont. And again, supporting Longmont Startup Week, which we hope you all attend the first week in June of this year. It's now a seven-day event, and I think we're doing some, some really cool and different things, and continue to try to be as inclusive of the entire startup community as possible, which we think makes us unique amongst Startup Week events within the region. And that is all I have for this evening. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Christensen.
Thanks. It's, it's really great to see new statistics on total number of jobs and things like that. And to realize that the bulk of the jobs are actually small businesses, not primary businesses, but local. And so I'm really happy to see the, the Small Business Grant, and the Ignite Matching Grant, those are, those are very good additions. And Startup Week is becoming more and more of a great thing, so that's great. Would it be possible to, for us to get a list of the pre-certified companies for the enterprise zone?
No, I'm not able to provide that. That's proprietary confidential information.
Okay.
I can provide data in terms of geographic location of the businesses, where they're concentrated, types of business, those kinds of things. So I can provide some aggregate data, if you'd be interested in that. I just can't provide individual company information.
Yeah, I understand. Okay, thanks.
And I did, I don't know if I mentioned this before, but a lot of what I just presented in terms of the overall jobs information is not included in the quarterly report you received. Mining that data was a big job, and so actually just finished it on my, or right before I came over here this evening. And so I will be happy to provide this full presentation to you electronically after this meeting. And then, all of that information will be included in your packet in quarterly reports going forward.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. We all seem a little quiet tonight. Just want to say thanks.
Oh.
I think it's a great report. I think you're doing great work. I don't know if everybody knows, but you're two floors below me. I stop in all the time, and you're always at your desk working.
I try.
So we must, so, I have yet, I have yet to catch a slack, and I know, in all seriousness, I think you guys are doing a great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And I echo all of his comments. You do a great job. Thanks for all you do for the city.
Thank you.
All right. Can we move on to, now it's time for
Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you. Oh, I got a proclamation. So we have a proclamation designating April 26, 2016, as Heart of a Servant Day in Longmont, Colorado. Whereas Heart of a Servant Day honors Carla O'Boyle, who aimed to foster community stewardship among individuals, faith communities, schools, nonprofits, businesses, and the city by providing resources and services in response to the social and economic challenges of those in need. And whereas the citizens of Longmont recognize that serving others significantly contributes to the enhancement of our quality of life, and whereas Longmont supports the humane, human service agencies in our community who work together to make Longmont a place that cares about those in need, and whereas our community forces, focuses its commitment to improving the lives of its citizens now, and for the future generations. Now therefore, I, Dennis Alcoams, Mayor, by the virtue of the authority vested in me and the City Council of the City of Longmont, do hereby proclaim, April 26, 2016, as Heart of the Servant Day in Longmont, and I invite all citizens in the community to celebrate the importance of human service agencies throughout our community, and encourage everyone to have that Heart of a Servant attitude that Carla so extraordinarily believed in, and lived through her actions. So thank you for being here. Would anybody like to make any comments? Head up to the mic, if you'd like to. Don't be bashful.
Thank you, guys. This is a representative of the St. Brain Community Council, a lot of our human service organizations. And our president is here, as well as Carla's husband is also here. And as you know, Carla was a, also a teacher here in the St. Brain Valley School District. So we have several of her students here as well, that she impacted their lives. And so this is bigger than just the human service organizations, but it's also about serving our community and all of our citizens within it. And that's, that's the heart of Carla. So there's a lot of folks represented here. So I don't know if anybody else wants to say anything other than that.
I would just like to say that Carla had an impact on El Comete as well. She was the grant writer for about two years, a while back. One of the many things she did for the community.
Awesome.
As one of Carla O'Boyle's past students, I had her in '94. I was a failing student. She turned me around to an A student. I finished middle school with all As. I went into high school, unfortunately, I dropped out. But Mrs. O'Boyle chased me down, got me to go back, got me to go back to school. She helped me accomplish my diploma through adult education. She followed me through college, helped me get my associate's degree in criminal justice, and has followed me all the way through, till, till the day of her death. Guiding my kids, guiding my parents, tutoring me, tutoring my sisters, tutoring my brothers. She was there for my kids when I had them. She, you know, there was stuff that I had with schools, the teachers at school with my children, and, you know, she was one of those people that I could call, and she's like, "Step out of the box. You need to go through this A, B, C, and then if that don't work, then we'll find another avenue." So for you guys to honor her is a great deal. She was definitely going to be missed, and she is one of the most important people in my life that has actually made an impact. And I hope that there's more teachers like her to come.
Thank you for sharing that.
One of the things that we're really excited about is, is the St. Brain Community Council. We have, we've doubled our dues, our annual dues, and half of our annual dues are going to go to a scholarship fund that will be awarded through the Hispanic Education Foundation in honor of Carla, which will then be able to support many students for years to come. So that's going to be May 7, at Skyline, May 5, at Skyline High School. So we're excited about being able to kick that off, and the council being able to fund that scholarship for years to come. So thank you for tonight, and we do want to take a photo.
Always, obviously.
(inaudible)
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 Yeah, yeah. I guess it's now time for public invited to be heard. So the first person on the list is Don Russell, so please come down and state your name and address for the record. And he will be followed by Gary Richardson.
My name is Don Russell. For the last 36 years, I've lived at 206 Judson. I'm speaking with respect to the Bone Farm PUD concept. I haven't seen a site plan more recent than their Concept 3, so I'm unclear about the locations of the Live Work concept. Is the retail area shown on the site plan also to be Live Work? We don't want a strip center on Spruce Avenue with storefront facing the street. How will this be different? How will this project be different? How is it possible the city doesn't see that retail is clearly incompatible with this neighborhood? The statements at meetings, at previous meetings, with respect to the Planning and Zoning Commission stated, "Well, something's going to be built there anyway." May be true, given the current nature of our society. But retail has no place in this neighborhood. Thank you, members of council.
Thank you. Gary Richardson?
Mayor Coombs, councilman and Longmont citizens. I'm Gary Richardson, and I am here regarding the Bone Farm. I gave a letter to the council last week, and I'd like to just bring out a couple of points. One of them is that Spruce has been there for a long time, and we think of it as a historic area. And if you look at the zoning maps, and you look at the LACP, it's always been residential, okay? The LACP has it down as being either a low or medium density, residential density, okay? It never says anything at all about commercial. When it goes into the zoning map, it's very obvious. Anything above Spruce is R1. Below, it's RMD. Again, there is no commercial zoning anywhere on Spruce, or anywhere down to First Avenue. That's fairly, fairly obvious when you just look at the maps. When you go back about four years, and I'm a little bit off on the time, but about four years ago, we had a first meeting. They had it on the gazebo on Spruce Street, and that was the first time that anybody of the neighborhood were exposed to the concept of the HOA. They call it cohousing, but in fact, it's an HOA. And they are planning on doing fees, which is, that's what HOAs do. At the beginning, everybody on Spruce, of course, wanted low density, you know, keeping density down. Obviously, the people that wanted to change the Bone Farm, they want to have higher density. At the beginning, at the beginning, we didn't really come to any concerns about anything. And after that, we, that first meeting, we left without any agreed upon, excuse me, I had a stroke, and we didn't have any agreed-upon directions or decisions. And then about a year later, we found that the Bone Farm was given an RMD zoning. Okay, that's not really what we'd like to have had, but RMD, that's the way it's always been across the street. And then, after about a year or so, the Planning and Zoning Rule kicked in. And basically, what happened is that to have an application put into Planning and Zoning, they first has to come and talk to the neighborhood. And that was, a lot of people showed up. And people really were a little bit cool to the concept.
Well, unfortunately, Gary, your three minutes are up, so you're, Nancy is up next, so maybe she can carry on?
She is, she is. The major thing I'd just like to point out is, you know what? We're here, there are a lot of people on Spruce, and we'd really like to ask you to please keep it with the RMD. That works out just fine. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nancy Richardson, and she'll be followed by Barb Graves.
Mayor, City Council, any Planning and Zoning people that happen to be here, and all my neighbors, thank you for coming, and thank you for this time. And yes,
So please state your name and address for the record again.
Oh, I thought that you already did that.
Well, I did, but this is a formal alley.
Nancy Richardson, 1214
Okay.
Spruce Avenue, with him. I want to talk about three things. That was my, my first thing is, thank you for having us and allowing the time. Another thing I want to say about the neighborhood, kind of in a different way, is it's really old. It's over 100 years old. Our house was with the first Kaufman subdivision, and it was built in 1912. It reminds me of that fact a lot. The neighborhood is low-profile. It's not a fancy neighborhood. There's not much drama, sometimes, but not much. And you know, there's not much turnover. It seems like people come, and they move in, and they stay. You know why? Because it's a good place to call home. And as Gary said, never been anything but residential, except when Mr. Bond had his farm, and the donkeys, and the cows, and stuff. But not since then. The thing that I'm here to talk about, too, is the rezoning. At the last Planning and Zoning meeting in March, the developers and some of the potential residents expressed need, a need, to change, to include commercial in their zoning. There were two reasons. First, the people in the, the development, many of them wanted to work at home businesses. And the second was, because with the, that, those funds, they could offset the homeowners association fees. With regard to the, the first item, I want to speak. The second item, that's not my problem, homeowners fees, and it's not my responsibility, I don't feel, to support it. But with regard to the first, there, as Planning and Zoning pointed out immediately in that meeting, that, that's already in place. You can do that. And that's where I can speak to that firsthand. We went to Planning and Zoning when we wanted to do a home business, and they guided us and helped us so much. I'm sorry.
Sir.
But we ran a successful food business. We were gypsy gourmet, and for 16 years, we didn't have commercial. Please don't vote for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Barb Graves? Barb Graves?
Hello, Mayor and council members. My name is Barbara Graves, and I live at 1626 Centar Circle in Lafayette. I'm a Bond Farm, the emerging Bond Farm member. And the thing that I keep hearing a lot about is the traffic, not tonight, but the traffic. And I hope that we will, that the city will work with us to put in speed bumps, on Spruce especially, and on the streets that will be impacted by traffic, because we will have children also who will be in danger if people travel too fast on that street. As, I just want to assure everybody that we are very socially-minded, and we will welcome the greater community into our community. And we want to move to Bond Farm because it is a cohesive neighborhood, and we hope to be part of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ruth Thompson?
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Ruth Thompson. I live at 4128 Prey Fire Circle here in Longmont. I'm here to urge you to vote in favor of allowing the Bond Farm cohousing community to go forward. I've lived in cohousing for ten years, and I'm looking forward to living in it in Longmont. It's a wonderful way to live. Cohouses tend to be extremely responsible people, will be very good neighbors, will be good stewards of Bond Farm and of the larger community, because we live there, and this is our, our dream that we've worked for years and years to achieve. And we want it to be a wonderful place to live, as well as for the rest of the larger community. Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa Foster?
Now I can see you. Good evening, Mayor and council. Nice to see you tonight. Teresa Foster, 1440 Baker Street in Longmont. So, I want to thank you for your time and your efforts in considering the approval of the Bond Farm cohousing community development. And I'm here to speak in support of the rezoning, the, excuse me, I feel like I'm echoing. This cohousing concept is truly unique and will bring to Longmont a sustainable, resilient, and community-oriented development that the city of Longmont can be proud of. It can also serve as an example for future sustainable developments within the city. I would also like to address the Live/Work situation. It would be wonderful to have community members and those who live in the neighborhood to work close by their homes. I believe it will complement the neighborhood. And to the greater Bond Farm neighborhood, I empathize with you all. Bringing in a cohousing community of forty-plus homes can seem scary, but I ask that you give us a chance. I think you'll be delighted with the results if you open your heart and minds to this new and vibrant community. And I'd like to offer a friendly hello, and this is by Fred Rogers. Won't you be my neighbor? It's a beautiful day in this neighborhood. A beautiful day for a neighbor. Would you be mine? Could you be mine? I'm sorry, I can't sing it. It's a neighborly day in this beauty wood, a neighborly day for a beauty. Would you be mine? Could you be mine? I've always wanted to have a neighbor just like you. I've always wanted to live in a neighborhood with you. So, let's make the most of this beautiful day. Since we're together, we might as well say, "Will you be mine? Could you be mine? Won't you be my neighbor?" Thank you.
My name is Debbie Adams, and I live on the east side of town. Before the clock starts, what does this mean? How many? Thirty, okay. I got it down to one page. Since I am known as a cannabis advocate now, many Longmont citizens have come out to me in favor of cannabis, whether or not they consume it. Most people do not feel comfortable to speak up because of society's perceptions. We can all agree that no adult substances belong in the hands and minds of children. This includes marijuana, as well as cigarettes and alcohol. It has been proven that alcohol is actually the gateway drug, and all this time marijuana has been taking the rap. Every generation will find ways to do things when underaged. Sneak a smoke, have a drink, or take a toke. It is how we learn life lessons while we're young and foolish, which is something you have to be before you become old and wise. It is time to lift the misinformation stigma and open up an honest conversation that encourages education about the facts and fables of cannabis. Let us educate our youth with the truth, not the falsehoods. Let us move forward to change the culture with all the knowledge acquired to advance mankind's perception of cannabis. We are holding on to fallacies from the 1936 Reefer Madness propaganda and the Declaration of the War on Drugs in 1971 by Richard M. Nixon. Please keep in mind that the thirty-seventh president of the United States became the only U.S. president to resign the office. The so-called War on Drugs has been, has been passed on for decades and is a failure as a waste of resources, money, and lives. But times, they are changing. The Sun-Times Network reported that marijuana initiatives are sweeping across the nation this year, and already twenty states report marijuana legalization ballot measures in the November 2016 elections. If these states legalize, they would be joining twenty-four other states that have already legalized some form of recreational or medical marijuana. Federal legalization is more than likely not far behind. Maybe it is time for the Longmont City Council to acknowledge cannabis is here to stay. You have the power to create and control how it is handled. Accept the movement to benefit the community through regulation and taxation. Those who disagree do not have to ever enter a dispensary. It is time for a new paradigm for cannabis to come out of the shadows and into the light, because only in the light can we see clearly. Thank you.
Thank you. David Palmer?
Mayor, City Council, my name is David Palmer. I reside at 1430 Spruce Avenue, and want to say a few things about the Bond Farm Plan. I'm a fourth-generation native of Longmont. Was born on Vivian Street about two blocks away, and my mother still lives in the home my father built. Very concerned about the rezoning. I know we can't inevitably stop development, but the commercial, I'm adamantly against it. And with all good intentions and cohabitation and so on and so forth, bottom line is, when it's commercial, it's zone-commercial. If somebody else takes over, it can be sold. We could have any type of business in there. This is one of the most historic places in Longmont, and it's always been single-family. And the impact is going to be very strong just by developing the land. It's unfortunate, last farm in Longmont proper. Traffic is going to be horrendous. If you know Spruce, if you park a car on either side of the street, there's only one car that can pass. And with forty-two units, and I know people say, "Well, we're only going to have one car. We're only going to have the people there under these homeowner rules." Well, bottom line is, if it's zone-commercial, it's zone-multi-density, and other people move in and the rules change, anything can happen. If you figure forty-two units, one car, two cars, teenagers growing up, whatever the reason, you're going to have at least a hundred and sixty trips more a day. Sunset Bridge is opening. People are going to use all these throughways. There's a number of families with young children, there's bicyclists, there's dog walkers, there's everybody that uses that corridor there. The city of Longmont South Sunset Campus uses Spruce. And part of that is now because they can't use Sunset. But my point is, is that it's going to be a real problem. Speed bumps are not the issue here, or not the answer, I should say. I sent a letter to council and the mayor, and I didn't have a response on it, but I hope that you do carefully consider this, because it's such an impact. And where will it lead in the future? Are we going to purchase other single-family homes in Old Town? Build apartments? Build other multi-density units? It's going to change the fabric of the whole community in that area. So, I ask you to, again, very carefully consider this. I think it's so important to so many people. And I know the best intentions are of these folks that want to live there. I'm not against that. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandy Glaviano? Okay. You can correct me when you get down.
I want to thank the mayor and the council for opening this up, and it's Sandy Glaviano.
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 Glaviano, got it, thank you.
First of all, I'd like to say that my heart and my mind is with the concept of cohousing. I think it's beautiful. I'd like to do it. But I don't see any way that commercial is going to add to the community. I moved up here eight years ago from Denver to get away from traffic, et cetera. And I love Longmont. I love Spruce Avenue. I love the neighbors. I don't want to see commercial a block away from my house. And I'd just like each of you to think about it. What if you woke up one day and you got a letter saying that a block away from your house was going to be rezoned, and they could put in some commercial? How would that affect where you live? Having commercial there will affect us mightily. And I'd love to have the community there, but I really don't feel like supporting them by having commercial there so that their HOA fees go down. Thank you.
Thank you. Ruby Bowman?
Hi, my name is Ruby Bowman, 1512 Left-Hand Drive, and I'm here this evening to voice my opposition to the Windy Gap Firming Project. This water project will strain city finance, financial resources, put a deep dent in citizens' wallets and pocketbooks, because we will have to pay increased water rates, and it will also contribute to the depletion of the Colorado River, an already endangered river. It is morally reprehensible to divert more water from this iconic river. As it stands now, the Colorado doesn't even reach the Gulf of California, because its water has been depleted, drawn for agriculture, urban development, among other things. Our water rates could increase twenty-one to twenty-two percent to pay for the firming project, and will continue to increase until 2027, and probably beyond that. I'm sick and tired of being treated like an ATM machine with constant withdrawals being made by the city. Please give me a break. I read in TC Line several comments objecting to the rate increases, saying that they wouldn't be watering their lawns as a result. Why doesn't Longmont have a water conservation rebate for residential turf replacement? With such an incentive, residents can get rid of their thirsty lawns and plant a ziriskate garden, which would require less watering, or they could install a native grass lawn, such as buffalo grass. I know from experience, it is expensive ripping out a lawn and replacing it with a rock garden or ziriskate. We need to have options to avoid having paying large water bills. We need turf replacement rebate as a water conservation incentive. Global warming is heating up our planet. We are breaking records. In 2015, surface temperatures were the warmest since modern record-keeping began in 1880. Scientists predict we will experience mega droughts by mid-century, which will last for decades, although I think the mega droughts will come here sooner. The Windy Gap Firming Project will be obsolete when mega droughts begin in the Southwest and Central Plains. The key to surviving drought is water conservation. I was born and raised in the West, and I remember as a child visiting Page, Arizona, and seeing the Glen Canyon Dam being built. Even as a child, I thought it was reprehensible damming the river, and I feel the same way about diverting more water from the Colorado for urban development. Instead of investing in the Windy Gap Firming Project, we should be focusing on a more serious water conservation program. Thank you.
Thank you. Deah Khalsa?
Mr. Mayor and the council, I want to thank you for all the energy you've put into the Bond Farm project. It's been a long haul for us. We've been working on it three or four years now. And we look forward to the time.
Excuse me, just real quick, could you pronounce your name again?
Oh, I'm sorry. Deah Khalsa.
Okay.
2707 Valmont Avenue, Boulder, Colorado, 80304.
Thank you.
Very much looking forward to our move, and I understand how the people feel about the commercial. We don't want commercial either. What we're really looking forward to is to have a work environment in the community. The idea of cohousing is to keep the size of the units down, make it more affordable, make it more ecologically sound, and in doing so, we put more emphasis into the community structures that the community at large will use. So, the idea is that we could have some space where, instead of having an office in our home, we can go and work in a, a lot of times it's called a hub, and there may be other small businesses there, but I'm not hearing anything about retail. So, I just encourage you to continue to support us as you have, and I hope it works out so we can have the Live/Work space there. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Cara Bradley?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Cara Bradley. My address is 4140 Seventeenth Street, Boulder. And I'm very, I'm also a member of the Bond Farm cohousing community, hopefully, soon to be moving to your beautiful city of Longmont. This has been a long journey for all of us, and we're working very hard, weekly and monthly, in committees, to try to make this a community that is a true, living, ecological, and healthful community for all of the members and the community at large. I understand, as everyone else has mentioned, that it is a daunting thing to say to the neighborhood that we want what they're considering commercial space and what we consider Live/Work. And I want to assure everyone on the City Council and in the greater community that we're not looking for retail places to come in or anything like that. As it has been mentioned before, we're looking for something where it will supplement and enhance the community and not take anything away from it, okay? And once again, I'm really looking forward to moving to Longmont with the rest of our community and making this a better city for everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you. David Cottington?
Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you for the opportunity. I'm David Cottington. I live at 4140 Seventeenth Street in Boulder, and I'm here to speak on behalf of Bond Farm. I know we have before us the issue of rezoning and whether to allow for a work-live component in Bond Farm. And I really get and I feel that it feels very impactful and contentious for the community at large. And I feel that concern. And I just want to submit the possibility... And I just want to submit the possibility that a work-live situation, that by the way is going to be extremely well-vetted, there will be nothing that will be taken lightly in this situation. Is there a possibility, I put this question to the community, is there a possibility that this work-live situation, with the people who may be part of that situation, could actually help to revitalize and enhance the community? I know there's a lot of concern about the impact. The impact of traffic and so forth, and the types of so-called businesses been labeled as commercial that might come in. And I just, again, want to reiterate that there's the possibility that this could really revitalize and enhance the community. And I know that we all want to be good neighbors, and we're going to have a very watchful eye over everything that comes into our community, the Bond Farm community. So, yes, I too am a big fan of Fred Rogers. Won't you be my neighbor? Thank you.
And he'll be followed by Jay Johnson.
Mayor and council members, my name is John Graves. I live at 1626 Centar Circle in Lafayette. I am also a member of the Bond Farm community that's founding and coming forward, and I'm just here to urge you to accept the funding, which will allow us to go forward and build a community which will provide us with, hopefully, the most affordable housing that we can get into. We're really looking forward to... We have been looking forward now for the better part of three years since we moved to Colorado. And we really wish to have you consider this and provide us with the rezoning that we're asking for. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and council members, my name is Jay Johnson. I live at 401 Interlocken Boulevard in Broomfield. I'm an engineer, but I'm not going to get into any details. I'd like to take a minute to go over some broader considerations. I am a recent member of the Bond Farm community. I was reading today about community vitality and people living and working together when I came upon a quote attributed to Yogi Berra. It's one of his paradoxes, and this one relates to reciprocity between people. Quote, "If you don't go to somebody's funeral, they won't come to yours." But seriously. We members are trying, as a group, to understand what it means to live in community, not only within the cohousing community, but also within the larger neighborhood in the city of Longmont. One example of cross-fertilization that's important to me is the potential for sharing with neighbors and maybe school groups, the lessons that we'll learn from the two-acre farm about how to provide local food sources. When I lived in the same house for 23 years, I often spoke at meetings like this, often against proposed real estate developments. So I get it. I understand that changes from the status quo in an established neighborhood can be scary. I don't think that what we are proposing is scary. Yes, it will be a construction site with noise and trucks for a while, but compare what we propose to the unknowns of a profit-driven developer with no interest in community or sustainability. What we propose may not be perfect in the eyes of every neighbor or stakeholder, but I think the foreseeable other alternatives for this land are much less beneficial for the city. So I ask for your support for the actions that will help Bond Farm Cohousing Community become a reality. Thank you.
Thank you. Laurel Ritchie?
Hello, I'm Laurel Ritchie. Thank you for having us tonight. I want to speak on behalf of Bond Farms. So I love Longmont. I wouldn't want anything bad to ever be developed in Longmont. Architecturally, I think that this is going to be a wonderful place. We spend a... We have an architectural committee. We spent a lot of time as an entire team and group coming up with what we want it to look like. There's going to be a lot of money put into that, and I don't think any of us would put up with anything that was unsightly, and it certainly would not be a strip malls-type of scenario. So I think it's going to be small places, probably places that are going to have low traffic. What I imagine being in there would be myself as a realtor, working possibly with a mortgage broker. I wouldn't have more than one to two visitors on a really good day, you know? And the traffic of me driving in and out to go see people would be equal to as if they were to come to me, so that wouldn't change the traffic flow. And I think from all the other people I've talked to, that's a similar case, too, that the traffic is not going to be significant because of the business, any more so than it would be if it was in the home or something. The whole idea being that, again, somebody had stated that these are smaller houses and we have shared spaces. So the shared space of a hub would make the home spaces smaller, just like the shared space of the community center means we don't have to all have our own media room and stuff. So I think this is a great idea. It's good for multi-generational, and especially in my situation, being a sandwich generation, having my son close by in our home and being able to go to work, and then my mother potentially being in the condos that this might even back to would be excellent. Historically, I don't think that this is... I know that in this particular community, it's not been zoned commercial, but I think the history of Longmont is that people have run businesses out of their houses. Not too long ago, I saw a house that had... An older house on Kimbark that had a barber shop in the front, a whole bunch of sinks in the living room that somebody has since torn out when they bought it. But this kind of thing did happen. Pharmacist working out of their home, doctors working out of their home, barbers working out of their home. So this, having a business right on, you know, in the front room of your house, this is the same sort of kind of concept. Turnover in cohousing is very low, similar to what the community is like now. If this was another type of development, a modern apartments or condos, chances are that the turnover would be very high. It would not be attractive. It would be filled with parking lots. That's probably what the people on Spruce would be seeing. Whereas this, almost all the parking's completely hidden underneath the buildings, with the exception of some parking on the street. But whether that's to access houses or to access these live-work situations, I don't think would matter. It's probably still going to be there. So it's my dream that I would be able to live there, work there, play there. And thank you very much.
Thank you. I just read a fascinating book called Blue Zones. And, you know, Blue Zones are these areas where, in the world where people live to be well into their hundreds, and the real common factor to all these Blue Zones is they all had strong community, social, neighborhood connections. So maybe there is something to this type of living. Anyway, that ends... First call, public invited to be heard.
Ready for your consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay. The first item on your consent agenda is Ordinance 2016-29, a bill for an ordinance approving an amendment to the agreement in furtherance of annexation for the Bond Farm property. And then the second item under the same... Second ordinance under the same item is a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the Bond Farm rezoning from RMD to PUDR, generally located at 1313 Spruce Avenue. Both of these ordinances are scheduled for public hearing and second reading on May 10. Item 8B is Ordinance 2016-31, an administrative ordinance approving the Habitat for Humanity of the St. Rain Valley Incorporated contract to buy and sell real estate for the conveyance of Eight Marshall Place to Habitat for Humanity of the St. Rain Valley, Inc. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for May 10. Item 9C, excuse me, is Resolution 2016-42, a resolution of the city approving the fifth intergovernmental agreement between the city and municipal sub-district of the Northern Colorado Water Conservancy District for participation in the Windy Gap Firming Project. Item 8D is Resolution 2016-43, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Boulder County for environmental sustainability grant funding for 2016. Item 8E is Resolution 2016-44, approving the First Amendment to the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Boulder County for creek restoration along Longmont Dam Road. Item 8F is Resolution 2016-45, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the state of Colorado for the Front Range Community College mural project. Item 8G is Resolution 2016-46, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the state St. Rain Valley School District for its summer food service program. Item, excuse me, 8H is accept funding from Friends of Longmont Youth in the amount of $97,604.50 to increase participation in summer meals program. Item 8I is approve and authorize the mayor to sign an application to the State of Colorado Department of Local Affairs for local government marijuana impact grant program. Item 8J is approve $55,258 in neighborhood improvement grant funding, as recommended by the Neighborhood Group Leaders Association. Item 8K is a legislative update. There are four bills that staff is asking for positions on. The first one is Senate Bill 16174 concerning the funding for Colorado Water Conservation Board projects, requesting of support position. Senate Bill 16177 concerning modifications of the 2015 urban renewal legislation, asking for support position. Senate Bill 16183 concerning a clarification to maintain the Public Utilities Commission authority over 911 calls, asking for an opposed position. Senate something resolution, I don't know what that stands for. SCR 16004 concerning an amendment to the Colorado Constitution that would impose a real estate transfer tax to finance affordable housing, and staff is asking for support position. And finally, item 8L is approve two capital improvement program amendments, one for the Windy Gap Firming Project and for the museum auditorium expansion. Staff is not requesting that any items be pulled.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you. I'd like to pull A, 8A. And then also, as far as the legislative update goes, K?
Wow, yeah.
I mean, if we just keep them on, it means that we support them all, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'd like to pull K.
I guess I'd like to pull I for discussion. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would move the consent agenda minus A, I, and K.
All right.
Second.
And moved and seconded, let's vote on that. Okay, that passes seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs, the first item on second reading and public hearings is Ordinance 2016-21, a bill for an ordinance making additional appropriations for the expenses and liabilities of the city of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2016. There is not a formal staff presentation planned for this, but staff is here to answer
Okay, if there's any questions, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing on Ordinance 2016-21. If there's anybody in the public who'd like to speak on this ordinance? I guess seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing on Ordinance 2016-21. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move Ordinance 2016-21.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, let's vote. Okay, someone hasn't voted yet.
I did.
Okay, it's seven to zero.
Your next item is Ordinance 2016-22, a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the river annexation, generally located east of Sunset Street and north of Boston Avenue, and zoning the property P for public. Again, no formal staff presentation planned on this item.
Okay. If there's no questions from council, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on Ordinance 2016-22. Is there anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this ordinance? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing on Ordinance 2016-22. Councilmember Finley? Someone's got their mic on that's holding, maybe it's...
Well, it must be me.
Oh, okay.
Who is the city manager?
Yes. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move passage of Ordinance 2016-22.
Second.
All right, that's been moved and seconded, let's vote. That passes seven to zero.
Your next item is Ordinance 2016-23, a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the vacation of 100-square-foot and 80-square-foot electrical easements on Lot 1 Wallace Edition Fourth filing, Replat J, generally located east of Ionosphere Street and north of Neon Forest Circle. Once again, no staff presentation on this item.
Is there anybody from the public that'd like to speak on Ordinance 2016-23?
Hi, Karen Antonacci, 2211 Pratt Street, Longmont. I would just like to ask the council and the mayor to speak up a little bit. It's a little hard to hear you in the cheap seats.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing on Ordinance 2016-23. Councilmember Moore?
I move Ordinance 2016-23.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, let's vote.
I think we should have a discussion on the cheap seats.
That passes seven to zero.
Okay, the next item is Ordinance 2016-24, a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the vacation of a 111.12-square-foot portion of a utility easement on Lot 5, Block 1 of the Garden Greens Commercial Subdivision, generally located at 2025 Main Street. Sandy got the mics turned up.
All right, since there's no questions from council, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing on Ordinance 2016-24. Is there anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this ordinance? I guess seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on Ordinance 2016-24. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move passage of Ordinance 2016-24.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. And that passes seven to zero.
And the next item is Ordinance 2016-25, a bill for an ordinance approving the vacation of the south 15 feet of a 30-foot-wide easement and access and utility easement on Lot 4, Block 1, North Ridge Community Center subdivision, generally located west of Main and north of Crispin Drive. Once again, no formal staff presentation on this item.
Okay, we did have Lee Phillips signed up to speak on this, so I'll open the public hearing for Lee Phillips.
Mayor and council members, I don't know if this is really necessary, but I'm here in favor of that. And I just live west of there. I'm Lee Phillips at 939 Parker Drive, and that's where the 114 Crispin Apartments will be built. So I'm happy to see that they're asking for this easement. I don't know if anyone's here from, what is it? MJL.
Okay.
I guess I represent them, too.
All right. Well, thank you. Is there anybody else from the public who'd like to speak on Ordinance 2016-25? I guess seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on Ordinance 2016-25. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move Ordinance 2016-25.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Wait a second.
You only get one vote per issue for me.
Are you ready? All right, that passes seven to zero. All right, that passes seven to zero.
Remember all these computer glitches at a bunch of times. No, just kidding. Next item is Ordinance 2026 and 27, Impact Fee Revisions. The first one is Ordinance 201626, a bill for an ordinance amending Chapters 1438, 1502, and 1510 of the Longmont Municipal Code Regarding the Transportation Impact Fee. And then Ordinance 201627, a bill for an ordinance amending Chapter 14.46 of the Longmont Municipal Code Regarding the Recreation Building Impact Fees. And we do have a staff presentation on this item. Is that you? Okay. David Starrance.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, David Starrance, Redevelopment Manager. I'm here filling in for Joanie Marsh, who cannot be here tonight, to kind of provide you an update on the impact fee. So as you may remember from the previous meeting, Councilmember Finley has some specific questions regarding the assessments and the proposed fees. So I'm going to walk through some brief history and then get to that discussion point. To just kind of remind everyone, the impact fee study was commissioned, we commissioned Tisher Vice to complete the study. We held initial stakeholder input, which included meeting with the development committee at the beginning of the project. We, the consultant completed the analysis. We had the initial overview with council back in January 26. On February 5, we had a study session to review the draft impact fee study with council to receive direction on the draft fees that were proposed. Since that time, we reviewed and met with TAB, Prab, and the Senior Advisory Board, all recommending moving forward as presented. We also had a subsequent follow-up discussion with the developer stakeholder group on the final fees. And the recommended fees are reflected in the two ordinances that are before you. So just kind of in terms of the legal methodology for this impact fee, again, these are one-time payments to fund system improvements. They have to comply with state statute requirements, which were adopted back in 2001. In terms of the fee calculations, these include only the growth share. These cannot be deposited into the City Journal Fund. Again, these are for specific improvements related to transportation and recreation buildings. The basic legal requirements to impose a fee, there's three of them. There needs to be a need, there has to be a benefit, and there has to be proportionality given the cost. There's three methods that impact fees are used in terms of determining the calculation. One is a plan-based approach, the second is a cost recovery approach, and the third is incremental expansion. So for Longmont, we use both the incremental expansion approach, this is for the proposed recreation building fee, and then for the transportation community investment fee, the plan-based approach was used. And this is determining feature roadway capacity intersection requirements. So in terms of the summary of the impact fee ordinances, in terms of recommendations that are before you for potential action tonight, one is we're recommending that the public building fee be eliminated and that the recreation fee be adopted. The transportation fee was revised based on projects identified in the Longmont Roadway Plan, which was accepted by council back in 2014. Both fees are assessed on a square-foot basis rather than a one-fits-all approach. Also included is the waiver provision for affordable housing. In addition, in terms of the transportation fee, we are proposing a 29% fee reduction to be applied for this fee, and this is for projects that are located within the urban development service area. And these are generally the areas of downtown, first and main, and the city's two urban renewal areas. So per council direction, three examples were provided, and they were in your packet. These three examples include a single-family project, a townhome project, and a multifamily example. And so in your notes there, the single, in terms of, we compare it to what the fees are now, and then if we impose the revised fees, what the new fees would be. And so in terms of the single-family, the projected, and these are based on real projects, by the way, the single-family fee would increase about 3% or about $1,173 per unit. For a townhome and condo example, the fees increased about $623 per unit or about 3%. And then for a multifamily example, the fees increased about $8.68 per unit or less than 1%. And so when you look at the transportation fees in the region, in the 13-city, two-county evaluation, they show a low of 225 per unit to a high of about $3,793 per unit. Recreation fees are less prevalent as a standalone fee because they're often incorporated in a park fee. For example, the Lewisville rec fee ranges from $1,100 for multifamily to up to $2,800 per square foot based on the number of bedrooms. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Can you give me an example of an affordable single-family home? The cost of one?
Affordable, single-family?
According to our formula?
So the analysis that we use here was based on the valuation of about $350,000 for a single-family.
So an affordable house would be $350,000 or less?
That could be one example, yes. But it depends.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing on Ordinance 2016-26 and 27. Is there anybody from the public who'd like to come down and speak at this time? I guess seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on Ordinance 2016-26 and 27.
Mayor?
Sure.
Maybe in terms of, Councilmember Finley's question, I could maybe have Karen Rooney put her on the spot, if she has any examples in terms of the community services, how they defer an affordable housing, if that would be helpful. No?
Actually, I do have a comment about that before we vote.
Sure.
It seems to me like we need workforce housing. We always talk about it, we want it, and yet we continue to raise fees so that we'll never have it. And $350,000, that's very generous. So that makes me feel a little bit better about the workforce housing. But as far as a public policy, any new charges that we pass impact the cost of housing in Longmont. That's just a fact. We think, oh, the developers pay that. No, they don't. The people who buy houses pay that. And so we're just making housing less affordable for everyone across the board when we increase the fees. This bothers me. I also am a little bothered that we, whenever we do one of these studies, and it tells us how much we can charge, we always charge exactly as much as we possibly can without looking at perhaps other alternatives to fund things. We just, you know, that's as much as we can charge, so that's what we're going to charge. So impact fees in general are taxes that people don't vote on, and that bothers me as a public policy question as well. I have a hard time voting for this, even though I understand the need and I want us to have recreation, I want us to have good roads. But these are the things that make it a struggle for me to vote in favor of this. And maybe one of my councilmembers can help me get through that.
Well, I guess, you know, the recreation part, I can speak to that. I mean, having access to good public recreation, and I know right now, the rec center is just packed, absolutely packed. In fact, it's so packed, you can't even work out there sometimes, you can't find a place to park sometimes. So I mean, that's, to me, is telling me that, you know, we need more rec centers and more recreation. And, you know, health and wellness is so tied with recreation, so I understand that portion of it pretty well.
Yes, councilman, mayor and councilmember, so the recreation fee is tied to population on a, you know, per capita basis. Jeff Freezer is here, in terms of if you have specific questions about the future expansion based on population, what types of facilities, you know, will be paid for through this type of fee, if you would like.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. In theory, I agree with Councilman Finley, but is there any correlation that if we dropped these impact fees, that the value of the house or the market cost of the house would drop? Isn't the housing cost driven by market and not necessarily impacted by fees? Or am I wrong in that?
Well, the councilmember, Mayor and Councilmember Beck, so the cost of a house, you know, the impact fees are factored into the cost of a house.
Right.
And so what the developer charges, it depends on market conditions, depends on location, but also depends on, you know, the amount of fees as well. So there's a lot of various factors that go into a cost. Ultimately, one of the biggest factors, I think, is location, you know, and obviously the size of the house and its scale. But, you know...
So the fee is not the only thing, the deciding factor on the cost of a house?
Correct. Land value's a big one, too. For example, urban fill versus a more green fill location, these have cost differentials in terms of land, depends on what the developer pays to acquire the property, which impacts how much he can charge to build the house.
Correct, thank you.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. And the affordable housing waiver, that's just for the transportation fee, correct? The way I'm reading it, the Planning and Services Development Director may waive the applicable transportation impact fee on the development of low or moderate income housing under the process described in Chapter 4.79.
Correct. And there's other waivers for other impact fees not included in this study. For example, water and sewer fee reductions and so forth. But yeah, for this, it's...
It's difficult, you know, and I tend to agree with Councilmember Finley. But you also have folks that have asked, you know, I hear this all the time, please run government-like business. When things, costs go up, unfortunately, you have to put that cost onto the consumer. We have waivers that are in place for those for affordable housing. I would like to see more affordable housing. That does not mean I'm looking for it or would advocate for an inclusionary zoning ordinance, so I'll be clear on that. But any fee waivers or incentives we can offer, I think this goes towards that. Whether it's, again, electric rates, water rates, we had our discussion last week on garbage and composting, you know, when, you know, I do believe in growth pays its way. We have these fees in place to do that, to have better roads, to have better recreation. You know, there are folks that moved to Longmont, not only for a cohousing type of scenario, but also to have, we have the great parks, we also have district parks, we have city parks, we have pools, it's that type of atmosphere that we want to encourage. You know, everyone along the front range can talk about quality of life. You know, everyone wants a great quality of life. I think Longmont has that because, one, we have facilities that enable that, but those fees come from development. And we have great roads because those fees come from development. So with that, I would move Ordinance 2016-26.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Christensen?
I would like to support what Councilman Santos said regarding the fact that the reason we have the quality of life we have here is because we are trying to get impact to pay for the impact it causes. When we add families and families and families and families, it means we need to have more transportation, we need to have more recreation, we need to have more roads, we need to have more bike paths, we need to maintain the, we need to have, you know, all of our transportation needs are increased. And so this is a very sensible fee. And as far as the affordable housing part, that is already waived, so that doesn't affect the lower-income housing being built. So I would strongly support this.
Sean, did you want to make a comment?
I'm not letting you in, Sean. Not letting you in.
Come on, Brian.
Okay, I'm letting you in.
I do just want to clarify that the, Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Finley specifically, just wanted to clarify that the affordable housing definition is actually updated annually according to the median family home price established by the Department of Housing and Urban Development, so we can get that figure for you. And then also, just pointing out that we are lowering water system development fees, and we've also lowered the park development fee from where it was originally with this policy. But you're correct that the overall, there is an overall increase because of additional new fees that are being charged.
All right. Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I was kidding earlier, Councilmember Finley, when I said, let me just tell you. But in hearing my fellow councilmembers talk, I'm going to vote for this, simply because, first of all, I feel like a lot of times we come to council, especially lately, and all we're doing is ask to increase fees and rates, and it sucks. It's a bad feeling, I don't like it. So as one of seven, I would encourage city staff to stop making us do that. So if I need to make a motion, I'll make a motion. But it's bad politics, it makes me feel bad, and it's just bad all the way around. But in this particular case, essentially, if we're going to have somebody move in and they want to add themselves into the Longmont family, they're going to be needing a little bit more roads, a little bit more rec centers. And so the best, easiest, most effective, and probably the fairest way is saying, look, if your family wants to move into Longmont, participate, you should pay the incremental piece to build your part of the swimming pool, or build your part of the tennis court, or build your part of the road. So I don't have a problem with this one, and I think we should vote for it. Not so strongly as Councilmember Polly down there at the end, but I'm going to vote for it.
Councilmember Finley?
Well, I knew you were all going to vote for it, because we all talked about it, and we all agree that these things need to be built. And I will probably vote for this as well, because we haven't had any of the developers come out and say, oh, this is terrible. If they're not concerned, I don't know why I'm concerned on their behalf, other than I do feel like it's impacting the price of homes, which is outrageous. So let's vote.
All right. We're voting on Ordinance 2016-26. All right, that passes seven to zero. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move Ordinance 2016-27.
All right, that's been moved and seconded, let's vote on that. Okay, that passes seven to zero. Did we capture that? Okay.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is Ordinance 201628, a bill for an administrative ordinance approving the conveyance of a parcel of city-owned land to the Andrea Pierce Bigelow Living Trust, generally located south of Sandstone Ranch. And I guess Dan Wolford has a presentation on this item.
Your mic's off. There we go. Mayor Councilmember Dan Wolford, Natural Resources. Let's start again. Mayor Councilmember Dan Wolford, Land Program Administrator for Public Works and Natural Resources. I don't have a formal presentation for you tonight, but I'm here to remind you that this is, in fact, an administrative task to provide this corrective deed to the Bigelow Trust, and want to remind you that this particular issue went in front of the Parks Board last month, and through the disposition of open space, was approved unanimously to move in that direction with a recommendation to you folks. So with that, I'm happy to address any questions you might have of this process.
I don't have any questions, I'm just glad that we're finally fixing this problem. Councilmember Christensen?
I'm just curious about why there's got to be such a problem. It sounds like a lot of things got lost or misconstrued or something. And probably none of us were here when this happened.
Mayor?
Anyway.
Councilman...
Councilman Christensen, I would say all of those are factors where items have been, had been lost. The legal descriptions, as it was, again, to be 100-foot wide, the original one was the southern, the southern 50, the northern, then the correction was the northern 50. So with some help and assistance, and now finally going through our surveying group and double-checking with the Bigelow Trust attorneys, I think we've got this one straightened out, so we're hopefully moving in that right direction.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing in ordinance 2016-28. Is there anybody from the public that'd like to speak on this? I guess, single one, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at ordinance 2016-28. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move 2016-28.
Second.
All right, that's been moved and seconded. Let's vote.
Thank you.
All right. Well, I think we've been sitting here for almost an hour and 45 minutes, and it's not good for anybody to sit too long, so why don't we take a 10-minute recess and then finish up after that.[670.79]
The first one is two ordinances, 2016-29 and 2016-30 regarding the Bond Farm rezoning. And we believe there's planning staff in the audience to address questions.
And I believe it was Councilmember Bagley that pulled that.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I figured, given all the interest in the audience, we might as well talk about this for a second. So I had some concerns about this project, a lot of them. And so I spent some time talking with residents who planned on moving into the project. And my concern initially was, why are we going to allow retail or commercial along this residential street or this residential street? And in talking with the residents that are going to be living there, my understanding is that they're going to have a couple of acres, that they're going to come together and farm together. And then they're not going to sell this food like at a farmer's market along the street. They're going to then like have different shares, like 50 shares of the farm. And then as they all farm it, they each get their share. And there's going to be a place where they go and the neighbors can go pick up their food there locally. That's number one. So there's not going to be a farmer's market there or anything like that. Number two, I was also explained that they're going to be smaller houses, like 500 to 1,200 square feet. And instead of having bigger living rooms with TVs like I have, or a home office like I have, they're going to get rid of that and then put it kind of in the middle of the community and encourage all the neighbors to go watch TV together and play ping pong and have places with desks where they can, you know, type on their laptops and communicate with one another. That's how I was kind of explaining the whole live-work commercial aspect of this. So I think it sounds like a novel concept and one that isn't a traditional, you know, retail-commercial-type component. But my question is, given what I just explained, is it necessary to change zoning? Because what I'm hearing from people is, this is what we're going to do. And everybody else has said, and the people who don't want are saying, we don't want this. And I don't see that they're mutually exclusive. And so my question is simply, do we have to change zoning to allow them to have live-work and to have an agricultural share program? Somebody on staff who knows more than me, yes.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and Councilman Bagley. I'm Katie Guthrie, Senior Planner in the Planning Department. I don't have the benefit of the code with me, but if we move on to other questions, I could take a look at that particular question, if a CSA would still be allowed in the RMD zoning. Correct? Is that your question?
Yes, whatever a CSA is, but yes, I imagine it's what my question is. And then the other question I'd have is, if your answer is, no, we can't do that without changing zoning, can we approve the zoning change and then make it clear to staff that there will be no traditional retail, but only the type of live-work and only the type of agricultural share program that we are hearing the Bond Farm residents advocating?
So that is Mayor Coombs and Councilman Bagley. That is a question I can answer more directly. In the Land Development Code, Section 1503, 060, Section B, it specifically talks about the types of uses that are allowed in the PUDR. So again, that's the requested rezone. So within PUDR, it says that this is a zoning district that's intended to provide opportunities for creative integration of resident-serving commercial areas within a residential neighborhood. Now that residential, sorry, resident-serving commercial uses then are further defined. It says that those types of uses can either be uses that are allowed in the R1, R2, or R3 residential districts. Or, commercial uses have to meet three, in particular, three additional criteria. So if commercial uses are going to be allowed in the PUDR, they have to be secondary to the principal permitted residential use. They have to be, they have to satisfy the neighborhood's center criteria, which is from the Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan. I can go into that in a minute. And the third one is that they have to, the commercial uses are designated primarily to serve the residents of the PUD.
Okay. So essentially, what I'm hearing you just say, what you just said was, if, at some point, city council can determine that whatever the proposed, if it's a retail store, if they wanted to put in a dollar store, we can make the determination that it doesn't meet those three. Whereas if they're planning on putting in six live-work centers, the answer is yes, we can.
Yeah. Mayor Coombs and Councilman Bagley, I would say, in general, staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as city council, will have an opportunity to look at those proposed uses much closer when a preliminary PUD development plan is submitted.
And when will that, do we know when it's going to be submitted?
After they get through this process.
I mean, I guess what I'm saying is, is there one in the works? Is there one ready to be submitted? Is this going to be years from now?
Mayor Coombs and Councilman Bagley, I have not seen a draft of any kind of development plan at this point. The applicant is in the audience. I think you've heard from lots of future potential residents that those are kinds of things that they are working on in addition to architecture, but also, you know, unit Clearly, they have committees that are talking about the proposed live-work units. I think that more information related to that particular aspect could probably be garnered from the applicant at this point.
I guess, I'd still like the answer to my first question. And I guess we can move on to Kay, the other problem I had. Didn't give you a chance to look it up. Or maybe Sean already has the answer? No? I pulled up the code. So, but if the answer is, no, we have to change it, I still would vote for it with the understanding and the clear message that, I don't know if I should say "I" or "we", but "I" and I'm sure "we" heard the concerns of the surrounding neighbors, the neighbors. And when it comes back with the PUD, I'm not going to vote or permit traditional retail in that neighborhood that would increase traffic and destroy the feeling and the feel of the neighborhood. So as long as it's what I'm hearing from the Bond Farm, I'd be okay with it. But I hear, certainly hear the neighbors' concerns and would vote against it in the future if that should begin to take form.
Mayor Coombs and Councilman Bagley, just to reiterate, under the PUDR zoning, traditional retail or traditional commercial is not mentioned at all and probably, it's an assumption on my part, but what those terms mean are not uses that are intended to be allowed in the PUDR zoning district as defined by our, the Land Development Code. So I'll take a quick peek and find out if a CSA, which is a community-supported agriculture, which is a farm that sells shares, would be allowed in the RMD zoning district.
So Mayor Council, so one, this is first reading, so that has to be, this has, this item has to be brought back to the council for a second reading and public hearing.
Can we just vote on it then and then just?
You can vote on that and then we can bring the answer back to you at the second hearing in the public. What I also wanted to state too was, is when you look at the requirements within the PUD, so when they come in, this is the first step. The second step then, once we get through this, is that we then have the full development plans that come in. At that point, that's when you look at what someone wants to place in the designated area and whether it meets the specific requirements that Katie listed out. And that's another part of the process.
Then let's, don't tell her that she doesn't need to, next time. You don't need to, not going to pop quiz you. Next time. Let's vote on it.
Okay.
I mean, make a motion. You got the mic.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess I am supportive of this idea of co-housing communities. So I think it's an interesting concept and I look forward to, hopefully, that it will come to fruition. I do have a question on the concept plan. This is probably a question for Katie.
So much for the pop quiz.
And I understand this is just a concept plan, but it's only showing one access point into the community. And I would think that first responders would prefer to have more access to the community than just one point of access.
Mayor Coombs and Councilman Moore. So at this concept level, our fire safety department staff has taken a look at it. I think preliminarily, at the end of that access road, it is showing a hammerhead turnaround, which is a feature that's typically requested by fire department staff. And when they look at two points of access, I think they're also looking at access along Spruce Street. So again, the specificity of meeting the two points of access requirement is something that would be evaluated during the development plan process.
Councilmember Christensen?
Okay, I would like to reiterate that this is my neighborhood too. So I do see what, I mean, I have listened to many of the, because it's my neighborhood, I've listened to many of the discussions with the neighbors. And I understand what they're seeing, and especially because this will be heavily impacted by Sunset Bridge when it opens. So we really need to be very mindful of the fact that this neighborhood can't become a thoroughfare. Third has become a thoroughfare, Spruce has become a thoroughfare, and we have to do some things to mitigate here. I'm wondering if we need 28 parking spaces there. That's what's scheduled to be there right now. And I tried to find out from Brian Schumacher how that was determined. I think if there were a few less parking spaces, people would be a little less upset about it. I would like to point out, however, I'm very much for this. It's exactly, the walkable neighborhood is exactly what we're trying to emphasize. And I would like to point out that the last 20 years or so of the Bond Farm, when it has been virtually abandoned, are the only times it hasn't been a commercial or live-work space. Farming is the original live-work space. You live on the farm and you farm there. So it was, and people came to the Bond Farm to buy eggs, cattle, I mean, eggs, milk, bull services. And they, before that, it was a brickyard. And we currently also have Richards on Third Avenue. So this is not necessarily a negative thing. We don't want some sort of, you know, strip mall, as people said. Obviously, that isn't what they're planning to do. They're planning to have live-work spaces. And I think that would be very good because people can walk to things. Anyway, I, forty, just a little while ago, we approved a similar change of zoning on Ninth Avenue, I believe, which was scheduled, I think it was Ninth Avenue or else Nelson, where it was scheduled, they wanted to cluster buildings so they could have more open space. And we approved that because that's a good idea. That's what the Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan is trying to do. Forty percent of this space would be farmed. So we're actually restoring it to farming. So I strongly support this. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and move this item A, 8A. Can I have a second?
There are two ordinances on that, so could you accept the votes on those?
All right. So let's just consider the first part, the ordinance 8A1, which is ordinance 2016-29. Okay, that's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero. Councilmember Bagley?
I move passage of ordinance 2016-30.
All right, that's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. That passes seven to zero. Go ahead, Eugene.
Mayor and Council, Eugene May, City Attorney. Based on the amount of community interest in this, I want to take this opportunity in my hand, Council, to treat this matter as a quasi-judicial proceeding. This is just first reading. It sounds like there's the potential for residents to try to contact you. And, you know, in a quasi-judicial proceeding, Council should be making its decision based on the evidence presented at the hearings, at the council meetings.
Thank you. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. Harold, you got something?
One of the things I was going to say, because there's a lot of folks in attendance at this meeting that's interested in this, at the next agenda, there'll be a sign-up sheet for the public hearing portion of that. And so it's important that that's where folks sign up to speak, so that can be on the record.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I think for educational purposes for members of council and the public to get submitted at the next meeting that this comes up on May 10th, through the proper channels to staff, what, you know, people can say, live-work, and it could be very different meanings. It would be good to have some information about exactly what they're talking about. Or, you know, is it going, you know, what does that, what could that look like? What could that entail? I know we're in that very, in the concept plan and the amendment and rezoning, the other part about the parking and everything else comes along after this is done, the next round. But it would be good to understand exactly what is being talked about, about work and living on this piece, should it go through.
Okay.
Ready?
Yes.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is item I from the consent. Approve and authorize the mayor to sign the application for the Local, Department of Local Affairs Local Government Marijuana Impact Grant Program. Christina Pacheco-Sims is here to address questions.
Okay. I just had a couple of questions. You know, I understand the funds are going to be used to pay overtime wages for additional law enforcement activities for the city of Longmont related to retail marijuana, how we've been impacted. I was just curious, what kind of data do we have on how legalizing marijuana, how has it affected the city of Longmont in terms of law enforcement? I mean, what's the data telling you?
I get it. Good evening, Mayor Coombs, members of council. Christina Pacheco-Sims, Division Manager for Children, Youth, and Families. You know, we have some data related to stories that we've heard from families, just how, the impacts of the legalization of marijuana. I am working with Denise Wood and staff at Public Safety to get more crime data on that and should have that for the grant application within the next few days. But what we do have is more qualitative data around the impacts that families have seen at this point.
And by reading the last paragraph in the council comments, it says that, in this grant application plan, the city will continue its partnership with Longmont Community Justice Partnership, LCJT. LCG will continue to offer restorative justice to Longmont youth as an alternative to the criminal justice system, which I think we all are in agreement that that's a good program. When working with youth offenders who have pending charges related to marijuana possessions, LCJT refers these use to CYF staff and programs as a primary provider of resources and innovation and effectiveness services for youth. You know, I do agree that, you know, if this grant is used to help educate families, you know, the fact that, we all know that the type of marijuana that is being produced today is so much stronger than, you know, the marijuana back in the 70s. And, you know, and young kids, their brains aren't well-formed and we don't really know what, you know, potentially could be done. You know, this is really a hard, you know, I think we should, you know, this grant's available. It sounds like we're eligible for it at this point. I think I'm comfortable signing, going ahead with it. I would just like to get, at some point, some more information, try to understand what the real impacts have been on Longmont in terms of real data, that's not just anecdotal data. But anyway, thanks for bringing this forward.
Mayor Coombs and City Council, if I can also add, along with the data that we will be looking at, the local data for Longmont, there is also data statewide that we can provide and will reference in the grant application.
Okay, great. Councilmember Christensen?
I'm curious about whether this is just going to be a education program about marijuana or whether it's going to be all drugs, prescription or not. Because we have so many problems with, alcohol is even much more damaging. And now we have, I have been told by Chief Butler that we don't have so much of an opioid problem yet, but it is really a chronic problem across the United States. People from a very early age need to really understand how terribly drugs affect them and how much it destroys lives. And to me, if we're just educating, using this grant money to just educate people about marijuana, we're kind of losing out on the opportunity to just educate them on all the problems that come about from people abusing drugs.
Mayor Coombs, City Councilmember Christensen, yes, in how we're looking at this problem, these issues is similar to how we have worked on some of our gang issues. So looking at that prevention aspect, the intervention aspect, and the suppression aspect. And with prevention and intervention, we do look at the risky behaviors just across the board. Oftentimes, one comes along with others. If youth is involved in binge drinking, for example, the chances that there is other kind of risky behavior going on is increased. And so we will look at that as part of what we do.
Councilmember Joan Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Christina, it was interesting what you told me before, Council, about where the money's coming from for the grant. It's actually coming out of the sales tax from marijuana in the state. But we're looking at discussing the possibility of retail sales within Longmont. Can you explain the part about the losing the grant if the sales tax is different?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Peck, yes. My understanding is that we would qualify for the grant as long as there is not an additional sales, an additional tax imposed on the regular tax for retail marijuana.
So we can't have a tax upon a tax on marijuana, or you will lose the grant?
Or we would not qualify to be part.
Okay, thank you. That's good to keep in mind.
In the future, right.
As we look at this further, it's good to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Now's not the time, I think, to debate this issue, but just going back to your question, every year, the state has been tracking, it's called the Legalization of Marijuana in Colorado The Impact. And the group that they put together is called the Rocky Mountain High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area, which is, they put it out. It doesn't address Longmont specifically, but they track how marijuana and the legalization of marijuana has impacted Colorado with statistics. I'm not going to say positive or negative things. I would just encourage my council members to Google it and read it before we debate. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I guess I'll go ahead and, since I pulled this, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the authorization for the mayor to sign the application. All right, let's vote. That passes seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs, the next item is a legislative update. Sandra Cedar is here to address questions on these items.
Mayor Coombs, Sandy Cedar, Assistant City Manager. I do want to mention to you that number four on this council communication concerning submitting to the voters an amendment to the Colorado Constitution that would impose a real estate transfer tax did die in committee this morning. Is that your question?
And here's, well, that was, and so what I was going to-
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, I have really nothing else to say. That was my concern, and we don't need to talk about it now, but essentially, I was just going to point out, we learned nothing from RTD. The original, it says that the authority has sole administrative discretion to determine how best to expend the portion of monies deposited into the fund. And so what was going to happen is, we were going to give, for a $500,000 house, or $350,000 house, we're going to give $350 out of the sale. And then it was going to go down to Denver, and then we're going to give it to Boulder and Denver and the expensive places. And then we'd still be stuck with an affordable housing program and have to figure out a way to pay for it. So, anyway.
Problem solved.
But it died. So, thank you, fellow council members, for your understanding. Oh, so I move passage of, I guess, K, 8K.
All right, that's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. And that passes seven to zero. It didn't, okay.
Mayor Coombs, as she's working through the vote, I should just also mention that I did check again this morning, no construction defects bill. They're still waiting for it. At this point in the session, it's impossible essentially for me to bring you bills for support or opposition, but I will email it to you if something pops.
Okay.
Can you vote now?
Yep. All right, that passes seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is your general business appointment of the acting municipal judge. And I believe that Eugene May is going to present this to our human resource officer. He's not available tonight.
You're working at a council meeting? Hold on, I need to, I just need to soak this up.
Mayor and Council, Eugene May, City Attorney. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Videotape it.
Chief Human Resources Officer Joanne Zayas sends her regret. She can't make it tonight, but she asked me to present a little update on how the hiring process is going for the municipal judge and to get some direction on a question we had for you. So as you know, the municipal judge announced her retirement. The Ad Hoc Judicial Appointment Committee has been working very diligently and will be presenting its recommendations to council next week at your meeting. Time flies. The judge's retirement date is May 27th, which is about a month away. Staff looking at the timing of the hiring process is concerned that there will not be enough time to seat a new judge and continue the services at municipal court once the judge retires. So we are asking for council direction regarding the appointment of an acting municipal judge. Charter, Section 8.5, provides that the council can appoint an acting municipal judge for any purpose. And the purpose here would be to keep the court running. Judge Van De Hay has offered to serve in that capacity, to maintain continuity while council finishes its process, to appoint the next municipal judge. And council is asking, or seeking council direction, whether first, you would like to move forward with appointing acting municipal judge? And if so, whether or not you would like to have Judge Van De Hay serve in that role, or if staff should go forward and seek a pool of applicants for council's consideration.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Eugene, would she just, until such time as a municipal judge is appointed, just draw the check that she draws?
We haven't got to that level of detail. She does have a separation date of May 27th. I'd have to talk to HR about what that relationship would be. I would imagine it would be more in a contracting role.
Definitely a contracting role, but we could also contract with, about searching for a different, an interim judge. I'd like, I'd like to know what she's considering as a contract, because I just don't want to say yes and come back later and, you know, more than what she makes currently. And then, of course, there's the possibility that we could find an interim judge, not, I'm not looking for a cheap judge, don't get me wrong, but less than perhaps what she's going to bill us as a contract judge.
If council's interested in that information, I'm pretty confident we can bring that back next week during the presentation of the committee's recommendations and just kind of wrap it into that. of wrap it into that conversation.
I think that's important information that we have. I'm not really comfortable saying yes to Judge Van De Hay without knowing what the, as Councilmember Bagley said, I need more data.
Okay.
So that's just me, one of seven.
Well, I'm going to weigh in here. I think it's good to have continuity, so if we can make it happen, you know, I don't think we should quibble whether it's, she wants 5% more, 10%, obviously, she wants 50% more than where the current salary is, and I would agree with Councilmember Santos. But I, I think, you know, I think it's, you know, that she's offered in good faith to sit there, so I appreciate, you know, having that, and I think continuity is good, I think it'd be less disruption, and just better overall, even if we did pay a little bit more. So that's, that's my two cents. Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So that we've got, so I'm just going to share, I called with, I spoke with Eugene today about, here are my questions. One, do we have a list of acting judges, or potential acting judges? The answer was no. There's a short list for when judges get sick and whatnot, but as far as acting judges go, city staff would have to spend resources, et cetera, developing a list of potential candidates for that position. Potential problem would be, you know, I foresee people turning, I don't know how many people, how many people did apply for the judge's position? Do we know? Can we share that? Do we know?
I don't know.
Forty-eight?
Forty-eight.
Okay, that's a lot. So let's suppose we pick one of those people, that could be a little awkward, that we pick the acting judge, and then later on, don't select them. That could be a problem. But the big problem is, and again, we, Mr. May and myself, we touched on this, in law, you've got what's called a speedy trial issue, meaning that anyone who's currently facing any type of criminal charge, you've got six months to have a trial, at which point, if you don't have a trial, you get let go. So if there's any delay at all in our local municipality, it's basically like Amnesty Day, where we just say, I joke about it all the time, why don't we just have Amnesty Day? This would be the Longmont equivalent of Amnesty Day, if for some reason, we don't get the, we don't, we don't have an acting judge. So I understand some of the concerns my fellow council members have with, with the current judge. I think that it would just make sense, as much as some of, some of us, you, et cetera, would have heartburn, but looking for an acting judge, not finding one, and then having Judge Van De Hay say, no, I've already made plans to move to Aruba, would be problematic for our small city court system. So I think it would be wise to take the judge up on her offer, to just consider, she's not extending, because she ends and then would get a new contract, but I think it would be wise to have her cover for the city until we have her replacement found. It would, I think it would avoid a lot of political problems, crunch time on staff, as well as having hardened criminals running the streets free at the end of the six months. So, those are my two cents.
So Mayor, Council, I think one of the things is, we wanted to really see council's interest in, did you want us to just look at those three options? But if you wanted us to consider Judge Van De Hay, obviously, we didn't want to presume that that's the direction you wanted us to go, and then start negotiating a contract, because it's typically when all of those parameters start coming into place.
Right.
And so, if you all give us direction, you could also say, we give you a direction not to exceed what current compensation is, but typically, when we look at these types of arrangements, you really look at the time that they're working, because it's not the full-time position, they're coming in to do the work over X amount of hours, and so obviously, those are things that we have to talk about.
Yeah.
We didn't want to presume that that was the direction you wanted us to go, and say, here's what we brought to you all. So this is really for us to get some direction from council, so we can move forward.
And staff, staff did some initial outreach, looking for potential candidates for the acting municipal judge. We contacted CML. A number of the names they gave us are applicants.
Yeah, so. Well, again, my gut feelings are, I think, I agree with Brian, and I don't think we should, you know, when you terminate a job and you come back as basically a subcontractor, you generally get paid a premium, you get paid more when you come back as a subcontractor a little bit. I'm not saying that that's, but maybe, you know, we're only talking a couple of weeks here, it's not a long time, because it's going to happen pretty fast. So I don't think that we should quibble over, you know, if it's double their salary, then maybe, but, you know, if it's 10% or 20% over, I don't know. I mean, I'll let you guys negotiate the contract, but I think we should pursue a contract, and then see if we're comfortable with that contract.
And here's a piece that we don't know on this, depending on who the committee forwards to the council, and eventually, who the council selects, we just don't know their timing.
Right.
And so the timing could work itself out, where you may not need it for that long. So, you know, there's another variable in this that we just don't know.
Yes, okay. Councilmember Christensen.
Yes, I see what, I agree with all the concerns that Councilman Santos and Bagley and the mayor have expressed, and I agree mostly with the mayor. I do think that this is, it would be best for continuity purposes to keep Judge Van De Hay, since she's willing to do this, and I think that's nice, because once you're ready to retire, you're really ready to retire. But, yes, people do have to get paid a little more if they're on a contractual basis, because they're being, they're paying, well, you know, they're paying more taxes, they're, they have more costs, they're, they're on business. So hopefully, this will not take too long, but as you say, there, we have no idea, there are variables that could come into play, but, anyway, that's what I, my preference would be, to keep Judge Van De Hay.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. It just seems like continuity would be a good thing here, keeping Judge Van De Hay on as interim judge would make sense to me. I do, however, do not agree with paying a premium to bring her back, because per city manager's comments, probably not working as many hours. So, there again, I would follow up on that, let the city staff negotiate a contract, and see where it lands.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I would agree with Councilmember Moore. The question is, that contract's got to come back to us, correct?
No. Well, see a judge.
If we say it does, go negotiate and bring her back to us.
If council wants us to bring her back, we will bring her back.
I think that would be appropriate, because, again, I don't want to pay a premium for not doing the work that needs to be done.
We will bring you back, whatever, if council's direction is to proceed with negotiating.
So I move that we negotiate with Judge Van De Hay to be the interim judge, and bring back that contract for council approval.
All right.
In a pinch, I'll do it. I'll put it, I'll put the schedule. Two weeks of Bagley.
All right, we've, we've got a motion, it's been moved and seconded, let's vote.
Have you guys call me your honor for the rest of my term.
And that passes seven to zero.
Thank you, council.
All right. So now it's time for final call, public invited to be heard. Is anybody from the public who'd like to speak at final call, public invited to be heard? All right, come on down.
You know me already. I'm trying to get to know you. Councilmember Christensen, Councilmember Moore, Councilmember Bryan, Mayor Combs, Councilmember Santos, Finley, and Peck. I'm part of a member. We have to live at some point, somehow, without ignoring each other. Happiness is a piece of life. It's a piece of life. You can choose to ignore it, or embrace it. I'm gifted in so many ways. I just happen to be homeless. I could be a president if I go back to my country immediately. I could be a president. I'm serious, I'm telling you. Look into your hearts individually. I'm a president on the street. I mentioned it before. Like I said to Mayor Combs, I could, I could be a mayor. If I move back to my country, not only that I'm on the street, I could be anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now it's time for mayor and council comments. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I want to remind everybody of Cinco de Mayo this Saturday. Am I correct? It's this Saturday.
Actually, I don't think, I think that's the third, isn't it?
No.
Hold on, hold on. What I'm saying is that it's not the fifth of May.
I know, it's not the fifth, it's the 30th of April. We're celebrating Cinco de Mayo on the 30th of April, at Roosevelt Park. I hope everyone will come, it's always a good time, a lot of fun, and also, coming up in two weeks is Mother's Day, so I want all of you people who still have mothers that are alive, to buy your mother an awesome Mother's Day present, because if it weren't for her, you wouldn't be here. And one of the suggestions I have is the Sunflower Spa. Some of you male council members should be particularly generous to your wives in this area, and purchase a large gift certificate to the Sunflower Spa. They're located at 1745 Iron Horse Drive, and I'm there frequently in my spare time, so I highly recommend it.
Councilmember Christensen.
I can't remember what I was going to say.
Well, I'll jump in and remind everybody that there's coffee for council, featuring Jeff Moore and myself this Saturday at nine o'clock at 1940 Ionosphere, which I believe is down by, in Prospect, yeah. So, all right, Councilmember Christensen.
Okay, now I remember. All right, so on the 30th, in addition to Cinco de Mayo, which we're celebrating on April 30th, we're also celebrating the Youth of the Earth Festival at the Farmer's Market from nine to one, something like that. That should be fun, too, for both of them, so it'll be a nice Saturday. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Eugene's ready to go. He's got, he's got some confidence tonight, baby, you can tell.
So, I guess it's time now for city manager, any comments?
Okay, okay. One more thing. I actually wanted to thank the students and principal, and especially Carrie Adams at Silver Creek Academy, for having a very nice gathering with Jim White, and Hunter Lovins, and a number of other things. Speakers last Friday night, this was about, about the Earth Day Festival, which was actually on Earth Day, and this was an event cooked up by Edna Lohman, and I want to thank her very much for getting such wonderful speakers. Thank you.
All right, city manager, any comments?
We actually do have some comments today, Mayor Council. Really quick, I know we had someone at Public Invited to be Heard that requested outside water tap, outside of the city limits. We do have a process for that, and council asked for some information, and Dale has put that together, so he will briefly go over that with you.
Okay.
Mayor Combs and members of council, Dale Radamaker, Public Works, National Resources, so we did have that inquiry on April 12th, and so this is where the property generally is. You can see it's off 119th, just north of the river, it's about a nine acre parcel. Just real quickly, the status, we haven't reviewed this thing yet, because the code doesn't call for us to do that, but the property is outside the city limits, it's adjacent to city limits, though, and it, and it is in the Longmont planning area, those are two good things. It's not currently served by city water or sewer, it's not within the service area of Left Hand Water District either, but Left Hand has apparently indicated willingness to serve, and that was through the Boulder County Review Process. Property has an existing septic system, albeit it's not for the proposed use, same thing on the existing well, also not approved for the proposed use. Both the septic and the well were installed for a residential, for a, for a home that used to be on the property. The property has gone through the Boulder County Land Use Review over the last several months, it's zoned industrial out in the county, it did receive conditional approval of site plan and change of use from the county land use director on March 11th. There are numerous conditions in that approval, including things like getting a floodplain permit, acceptable water source, approval from the Department of Health and EPA for an onsite wastewater treatment system, hence the reason they're probably wanting to talk to the city. Some, especially on the wastewater side, it's pretty onerous to have to go to the EPA to get approval, because it's a commercial enterprise. So the owner's consultant came down on April 12th, indicating that they believe they had a failing well and a failing septic system, so in accordance with municipal code 1409, staff has forwarded to them the applications for an outside water and sewer taps. We understand that they are in the process of filling out those taps, tap applications. Once we receive those, we will review them in accordance with code. First thing we're going to look for is the condition of the well and the septic system, and that, again, in those who otherwise direct us, we will receive those applications and process them accordingly, which means, by the way, that if they're found to be a valid, say, an outside water tap, that would go to the water board, and then it would come up to city council for your consideration. All services outside the city take approval of the council ultimately. So if you have any questions at this time, I can answer them, otherwise, that's generally an update on where things are with that particular one.
Yeah, wow, you guys do good work. Thank you. Councilmember Christensen, did you have a question?
Well, actually. Actually, my question is, when something is residential, and then it becomes another zoning like, such as this, and they have a septic system and a well, is that sort of forever surrendered, the ability to use that septic system and that well?
So, Mayor Combs and Councilmember Christensen, what I believe is that the, let's say, the septic system, Boulder County Health will look at the condition of both the tank and the leach field to see how adequate they are for the proposed use. The nuance there, however, is that when it goes to a commercial use, what county health is saying is that they, it takes on a different status and requires additional review from Department of Health. So it may not be that the system can't serve, you know, can't provide it, because as we understand, they're only looking at a single restroom and those kinds of things. So it may not be a capacity issue as much as it is a change in use. The well, on the other hand, is permitted to the state of Colorado, and it is permitted for specific uses, and if you want to change that use, you have to go back and get that approved by the state, which is not an easy thing to do on a well. That could be difficult.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I guess the, just one thing that comes to mind that I talked to, I brought up to the city manager that, that I think would be appropriate to discuss, I am becoming concerned with the amount- with the amount of, not with you, Dale, you're okay, you can sit down. Unless you don't want to, you can stand there, that's all right. So I'm becoming concerned, as much as I feel empathy for, for the people who are vocally opposed to citizens, or to Mile High Skydiving, Tim Barth, our ex-airport manager, the airport in general, I am concerned at the number of requests, the number of emails, and what seems to be an ongoing battle that staff seems to be responding to. And I am concerned that that continuing request to, you know, go after whoever it is with the airport is becoming taxing on staff. And so, I don't think city staff should be responding in the way, using city resources in the way they have been. I don't know how we deal with that. I don't know what the appropriate forum is, but the email today asking us to essentially move to indict Tim Barth for, I, it's reached the point where it's just not gonna stop. And as much as I wanna find a solution for the airport, I don't want city staff to continue spending resources on it, just don't, think it's a waste of time. And so that doesn't mean I don't have empathy, and I don't think that we should address legitimate issues, I just don't, yeah, I just don't, I just don't think we should continue. So we don't need to vote on it tonight, I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention that I'm having those thoughts, and I don't know if anybody else is.
Well, I guess I'm having those thoughts, too, because I think we're, I'm glad some of these issues were brought up and we've done the research, and, you know, where we are today is now we're charging that fee. I, I think it's hard to go back and put together a story, and to prove criminal negligence is really difficult, and it puts us at a lot of risk, and I, I'm not comfortable going down that road and spending our resources on that effort. That's my opinion. One of seven. Two of seven.
You can add me in there.
All right.
I feel the same way.
City-
No more comments for me.
City attorney, any comments?
No comments, mayor.
All right. This meeting is adjourned.